There is no lack for those who fear him.
अत्थ्रे परस्त वांगले अवरके बायंदिरिंगल, अवरके बायंदोरलके कुरयिले.
Verse twelve, who is the man who loves to live a long life? And see good.
पणनेटा मसनम, नन्मय कानुम्बडी जीवन एविगरम्बी, नीडित्य नाटकल अभिषेकर मन्शन यार.
You got to do one thing.
निङल वनरे चैवेंडम.
Verse thirteen, keep your tongue from evil and your lips from telling lies.
उन नावे पोल्लापकुम, उन उधरिगले कबट्ट वसनपिक्की मिलकी कात्तुकोल.
What will happen to such a man?
इप्पड़ी पट्टा मनितिन कैन नादकुम?
Verse twelve, he will see good in all his days.
अवन नन्मय तनवाणाल एल्लाम कानुवान.
Take time in these days to learn to control your tongue.
उड़िया नावे कट्टुपड़त्तु उधरके, निङल नाटकले इंदना पायंबडित्तु कोलिंगल.
Especially at home.
पृपाहे वीडुगलिले.
Between husband and wife.
तनवन मनेव कुलाहे.
If you slip up, immediately say, Lord, I'm, say to your partner, I'm sorry, please forgive me for what I said.
निङल अप्पड़ी वार्किले तवरिविटाल, उंगली वार्के तुनेयर्थले सोलिंगल, नान तवरिविट्टे नै मनित्योड़.
God has allowed his children to go through troubles.
उपथ्रमले कुलाहे देवन उड़े पिल्लिगल सलुव्यदरके देवन ननमधिकरार.
But it says here in verse seventeen, the righteous cry and the Lord hears and delivers them out of all their troubles.
आनलिंग नावासिकरोम, अवका कत्थर कत्थत्य नीतिमानुडे जबत्ते केट्टे, अवरले एल्लाह उपथ्रमलकुम निङलाक्योड़दर.
And verse nineteen, many are the afflictions of the righteous people, but the Lord will deliver out of all of them.
नीतिमानकु वरम तुन्बंगल अनेगमाय इरकुम, कत्थर अविल्लाह उट्टलुम, इन्त्र अवने वडिविकरार.
So, we don't expect to have a very comfortable life on the earth when it says the righteous will face many afflictions.
नीतिमानकु वरम तुन्बंगल अनेगमाय इरकुम, इंद्व सलुव्यदनाले, नाम द भूमि इले ओर सोगसान वार्के एदर्वार्कम्बडियाद.
Worldly sinful people who live for the world and for money and all, they may have an easy time.
न उलगतिल उल्लादना पावमन मक्कल अवर उलगत्तकाम, पनत्तुकाम वाण्डुकोटुकरार, अवरलके सोगसान नाटकल इरकरार.
But if you are righteous, you'll have many afflictions.
आनल निङल नीतिमानुलाय इर्न्दाल, उंगलके वरम तुन्बंगल अनेगम.
But the Lord will do a miracle and help you through all of them, verse nineteen.
अत्थमदा मसन्तिले वासिकर्तुपुल, देवन अविलकुड़ाहुंगुलोडुकुड़ इर्न्दे, अर्पदमले चेदुंगल वडिविपर.
Verse eighteen.
पणनेटा मसनम.
The Lord is near those who are broken-hearted.
नूरुमुंडे इर्धियमला उलके कत्थसमीपमाय इरकरार.
Very important to have a broken heart before the Lord.
देवनकु उन्भागन नूरुमुंडे इर्धित्ते कोण्डर्नुपद मुख्यम.
Always this feeling, Lord, I am nothing before you, you are the ruler of this universe.
अंडवरे, नीर्द अंदगा प्रबंजत्ती आडुगी सिगर देवन अंडवरे, उमकु उन्भागन नान उन्तुमलिले इन्त्र उनर्वे पुरुदमा क्रिकेवेंडम.
Help me never to think that I am somebody.
अंडवरे, नान ओर पुरुट्टे इन्त्र ओरकालम एन्नवेंडम, अंडवरे उद्देश्य.
Help me to always remember that I am a nobody.
अंडवरे, नान उन्तुमलिले ओर पुरुट्टले इन्त्र अप्पुरुदम निन्ने वेत्तुकुल उद्देश्य.
Because if you are willing to be a nobody, then Christ will be exalted in your life.
निङल नान ओर पुरुट्टे इन्त्र सोलिंगल, अप्पड़ी इन्नेक्युम्बड़दे, कृष्टु उंगल वार्किले वीर्तपड़वा.
It's amazing what God will do for you when you take that position before him all the time.
एल्लाह नरंगले इम्द्द स्थानत्ते देवनकुम्बाका निङल एडुक्कुम्बड़दे, देवनुलके सहेकुड़े कारिंगल व्यपातरकुम.
Because it says here, the Lord is near the broken-hearted.
एन्नाल नूरुमुंडे अवरलके कत्थसमीपमाय इरकरार इंद्र सलुप्पट्टरकरद.
So I want the Lord to be near me all the time.
एनुडके, एनक समीपमाकुए, देवन अप्पुरुदम इरकन नान उर्मुरे.
When we are in trouble, it's good for the Lord is near us.
नामके तुन्बमरुम्बड़दे, कत्थनामु समीपमाय इरकरदे नल्लद.
So, the Lord will be near the broken-hearted.
अगेवे, नूरुमुंडलके कत्थसमीपमाय इरकरार.
But it says about proud people.
परमेल्लोले कुर्तसलुप्पट्टरकरदे.
Psalm one thirty-eight, verse six.
संकित नूति मृपत्यट्या आर.
Psalm one hundred and thirty-eight.
संकित नूति मृपत्यट्या.
And verse six.
आरम मसनु.
The Lord regards lowly people, but proud people he knows from far away.
कत्थर उयरंदर उयरंदम, तार्मिल्लोवनी नोकी पारकरार, मेट्टी मियानवनीयो दूरत्तरंद अरिकरार.
That means the Lord keeps proud people far away from him.
अरुड़ी अर्थम एन्नवेंडाल, परमेल्लोलके देवन दूरमाय इरकरार.
I want to be like God.
नान देवन अप्पुरुदम इरके उर्मुरे.
And I want to keep proud believers far away from me.
एनुड्तल रंदे दूरमाय, परमेल्लो विश्वासकले वेक्के उर्मुरे.
Because that's how God is.
एन्नाल अप्पड़ी तान देवन इरकरार.
I want to be near those who are humble and broken-hearted.
तार्मियाई, नूरुमुंडे इर्धियमला अवरलके नान समीपमाय इरके उर्मुरे.
I want to be like that myself.
नानुम अप्पड़ीय इरके उर्मुरे.
I want to say this, brothers and sisters, your life will be very, very happy if you pursue that path.
इंद वरिये निङल तोडरविरलिंद सोना, उंगली वार्के वेखुम मगिचानदा इरक्कुम अति सोलुकरे.
So, Coimbatore Church has gone on very well all these years.
उड़ुवांडुगलाके कोयम्प्तोर सभयानदे नंदराके, अदे नरंदिकरद.
And we praise God for brother Samuel and brother Kadiravan who have done a great job leading you.
उंगले नर्द्दम्बडियाई, सगुर सैमयल अवरलुम, सगुर कदिरवन अवरलुम, सिद्ध अर्पदमान वेलिकाके देवनुके नंडिसलत्तुकरो.
But we felt the need now to add two more elders to your church.
आनल इप्पड़ी तसभिकी इरंडे, इरंडे बेरे पुरुपुल अवरलाके निमिक्के वेंडमेटे उन्नदिकरो.
So I'm going to pray for brother Vedayan and brother Obadiah now.
इप्पड़ी तसगुदर वेदयन अवरलकाम, सगुदर ओबदिया अवरलकाम, नाम जबिक्के पोकरो.
So, brothers Obadiah and brother Vedayan, if you can turn on your videos and people can see you and the host can highlight you.
सगुदर ओबदिया अवरलुम, सगुदर वेदयन अवरलुम, उंगली वीडियोवे निङल इनेबल सिद्धुकोलिंगल, अप्पड़ी इल्लारुम पार्कपड़दरकद वस्तियाकर.
And we'll pray for brother Vedayan first and then brother Obadiah.
नाम मुलावताके सगुर वेदयन कान नाम जबिप्पो, मधरके प्रके सगुर ओबदिया कान नाम जबिप्पो.
Brother Samuel, are you going to control this or?
सगुर सैमयल, अवरकल इदे निङल कंट्रोल पुन्नुकला, ब्रा आरुमुंगम इस कंट्रोलिंग.
आरुमुंगम, okay. Can you ask these two brothers to highlight their videos then?
सगुदर वीडियोवे निङल हाईलाइट पुन्नुमरिमा, सगुर आरुम.
Yeah.
फॉटलाइट पुन्नुमरिमा?
Yeah.
This is brother Obadiah.
इवर सगुदर ओबदिया?
Where is that I?
Yes.
Is his video on?
Ah, yes, we are able to see the video.
In where, speaker view or gallery view or?
Ah, Obadiah, उंगली वीडियो, ah.
And Vedayan, both of them are?
इले, इट इस ऑन, इट इस ऑन ब्रा.
Ah, oh, there is Vedayan.
In the gallery view, you can see both.
Okay, ah. Where is brother Vedayan? All of you can see them.
Yes, brother Vedayan.
Can I see, turn down his video?
Video अंपन्नुमरे.
Vedayan ब्रा, निङे प्रेस लॉट अप्पड़ी सोलिंगल, निङे आडियो सोनलो.
Has he been muted by the host?
Totally.
Is that Vedayan?
Ah, Vedayan does.
Yeah, okay, I can hear you, but your video is, is it on?
Yes, Vedayan.
Oh.
Speaker view, is that in speaker's view?
I am trying both gallery and speaker.
Yeah, 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 now in gallery views.
Can all of you see his video because I can't?
Yes, Bro, Bro Obadiah and Brother Vedayan are there in the video.
And you can see them?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And all, all the others also?
Hopefully.
Okay. I don't know, this is, ah, not, I'm not able to see them, okay, Vedayan?
Raise your hands, brother.
Yes, brother.
Ah.
Okay, anyway, let's pray for brother Vedayan first.
नाम, मुलावत सगुर वेदयन अवरलकान नाम जबिप्पो.
And I want you to join me and pray that God will anoint this brother to be a good shepherd for you all.
उंगलीलारकाकुम, नल्लो ओर मेपुनाके देवन, अवर अभिषेक्कुम्बडियाके, नाम, जबिक्कुम्बड़दे निङल इल्लारुम नोडुकुड़ सेयर्नुकोलिंगल.
Heavenly Father, we just pray for our dear brother Vedayan.
अंडवरे, इंद विलिले सगुर वेदयन अवरलकान नाम जबिकरो.
And we want to ordain him as an elder in the church in Coimbatore.
अंडवरे, कोयम्प्तोर सभिले अवर रीमुपराके इंद विलिले नाम नेमिकरो.
Please lay your nail-pierced hand on his head.
अनिपायिंद अकरंगले अवर तलिमित्त वेत्तुरलुम, अंडवरे.
And anoint him.
अवर अभिषेक्यम, अंडवरे.
And Lord, please give him all the wisdom and strength needed to do this task.
अंडवरे, इंद पणी सेवुदरके वेंडे एल्ला, बेलनयम ज्ञानत्तिमिन तर्मुडियान अवर जबिकरो.
Please preserve him in humility till the, till the day you come.
अंडवरे, नीर वरुमरे अवर तार्मिले पादुकात्तुकोलुम्बडियान अवर जबिकरो.
And to be a servant of the church.
सभिकी अंडवरे ओर ऊळिराय इरके उद्देश्य.
Bless and protect his family.
अंडवरे, अवर आश्रुदियम अवर कुर्मत्ते नीर पादुकात्तुकोलो.
We commit him to you.
अवर उम्दुतिल अर्पणिकरो.
We pray that the blessing of the Lord will be upon his life and his ministry.
अंडवरे, कत्थरी आश्रुआदम उंगली वार्किले, उड़ित्तले इरक्कुम्बडियान अवर जबिकरो.
We dedicate him to you and anoint him.
अंडवरे.
In your name.
अंडवर, उम्मत नाले, अंडवरे, नांगल अवरे, अभिषेक्करोम, अंडवरे, उम्मत नाले अवरे कत्थावे अर्पणिकरो, प्रदिशेसिकर.
For this ministry.
इंद उड़ित्तरकाय नांगल अंडवरे, प्रदिशेसिकर.
In Jesus' name.
एस्यू नामतिल पितावे.
Amen.
Amin, amin.
God bless you, brother.
Thank you, brother.
देवन आश्रुदिपर.
Now, we pray for Obadiah.
इप्पड़ी नाम ओबदिया कान नाम जबिप्पो.
Okay.
Praise the Lord.
Okay, we'll pray for you also, brother.
सगुर उंगल कान नाम जबिप्पो.
Vincent, can everybody see him?
Yeah, bro, we are able to see, yeah.
I don't know why, I am not able to see, it doesn't matter. Heavenly Father, we pray for our dear brother Obadiah.
परलो पितावे, नांगल अरमेणस सगुर ओबदिया कान नाम जबिकरो.
Thank you for bringing him to the Coimbatore Church.
कोयम्प्तोर सभिकी अवर कुन्नुद्दुकाम, उम्मकन्डिसलत्तुकरो.
For the blessing he's already been there.
अंडवरे, एरकनवी निङल आश्रुआदम इरकरदा, अंडवरे.
And pray that you lay your hands upon, your nail-pierced hand on his head and anoint him for this eldership today.
अनिपायिंद अकरंगली नाले कत्थावे, अवर तलिले कईवेत्तु कत्थावे, उड़ित्तरकंडा अभिषेक्कुम्बडियान अवर जबिकरो.
He cannot do this without your anointing.
उम्मला अभिषेक्यम लामला अवराल इंद पणी से यमुडियादा, अंडवरे.
Preserve him in humility.
तार्मिले अवर पादुकात्तुकोलुम्बडियान अवर जबिकरो.
And bless his family.
अवर कुर्मत्ती आश्रुदियम.
And give him an anointed ministry to the church.
सभिकंडके तावी अभिषेक्कपट्ट उड़ित्ते रूमाय तर्मुडियान अवर जबिकरो.
Help him to be a servant of all of them.
अंडवर इल्लारकुम, अंडवरे ओर पणी आलाय इरके उद्देश्य.
And to work together, all three of them, Vedayan, Obadiah and Samuel, help them to work together.
अंडवरे, सगुर वेदयन, सगुर ओबदिया, सगुर सैमयल अवरलुम, अंडवरे, उन्तुने निंद उड़ियम सिय कृपचिकराक.
And their unity will be a testimony to all the churches in Tamil Nadu.
अंडवरे, उड़िया ओरमियानदे कत्थावे, आइक्यमानदे, तमिलनाडुले सभिलकम आश्रु साच्या इरकटुम.
And we pray that your blessing will be upon the church through their leadership.
अंडवर उड़े तलिमत्तु तुनाले, उम्मल आश्रुआदम तसभिकी इरक्कुम्बडियान अवर जबिकरो.
We commit Obadiah, brother Obadiah and his family to you.
ओबदिया अवर कुर्मत्ती, अंडवरे, उम्मत अंतरोपुकुड़करो.
Thank you, in Jesus' name.
नंद्री, अंडवरे, एस्यू नामतिल केकरो, पितावे.
Amen.
Amin, amin.
Thank you, brother Obadiah.
सगुर ओबदिया, मुकल.
Thank you, brother.
Okay, so now, ah, we want to. I want to ask all of you to support these three elders.
इंद मुण्ड्र मृपरलालियम निङल इल्लारुम तांगुम्बडियाई, नान उंगली केट्टुकोलिंगल.
I got a very lovely letter from brother Kadiravan.
सगुर कदिरवन अवरलत्रंद ओर नल्ले, अरम्यान ओर कड़ितित्ते नान पेट्रकरे.
And I want to read this to you.
नान अदे उंगलके वासिक्य उर्मुरे.
When he knew that these two brothers are going to be appointed as elders.
इंद इरंडे सगुदरले मूपरलाके, नेमिक्य पड़ा पोराल इन्त्र अरिंदुरणे?
He said he would like to step down from eldership.
इंद मूपरण्डा स्थानत्तलंदे, नान इरंगी वडिकरन इंद्र अवर सोलिरकरार.
And this is what he wrote.
इतना अवर ऐजिरकरार.
I'm very thankful to the Lord for giving me the privilege to serve God's people as an elder.
नान ओर मूपराके, नान ओर मूपराके, इंद सीएफसी कोयम्प्तोरके, पणिसे यमुड़ा देवन कुड़त्त, तरनत्तकाय देवनुके नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
And I'm also thankful for your words and advice through which I was protected in the church.
सभिले उम्मल आलसनीनालुम, वार्किनालुम, नान पादुकाकप्पट्टरकरे.
And that helped me to stand for the Lord in my weakness.
इनुड़ी बेलविनत्तले इम देवनुकान निर्कुम्बडियाय, अदे नकोद्देवी सिद्धुकरद.
I also want to thank brother Samuel for his guidance and support in my service.
सगुदर अंडे उड़ित्तले अवर अनके कुड़त्त आलसनीकाम, वैन्नार्थलकाम, अवरकुम नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
I'm thankful to the church as a whole for the blessing and care I've received during past years.
अरंदे आंडुगले नान पेट्रकुंददान, आश्रुआत्तुकाम, पादुकापुकाम, परामरिपुकाम, सभिक मुझुदुमाय नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
In my weakness, they accepted me.
इनुड़ी बेलविनत्तले अवरले नेट्रुकुंदारग.
And were submissive to my guidance.
इनुड़ी आलसनीके, वैन्नार्थलका, अवरल अरंगिर्नारग.
I see, I consider myself as unworthy and I thank my God with tears.
नान तगियत्रुन इन्त्र उनर्वकरे, देवनुके कन्नीरोडुकुड़ नान नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
Brother Kadiravan, can you highlight yourself, put a video, video on?
सगुर कदिरवन वीडियोले निङल वर्करिला?
Praise the Lord, brother. Praise the Lord, brother.
Praise the Lord, brother, good to see you.
Praise the Lord, उल्लपार्प्पुद नल्लद.
Okay, Vincent, I want to read some more.
नान इन्नुम कोण्य वासिक्य उर्मुरे.
This is what he said, "In the past, my desire and prayer was the Coimbatore Church, godly elders must be raised up."
अरंदे कालत्तले, इनुड़ी आशयम, वांजीम एन्नवेंडाल, देव बक्तियुल्ला मूपरले एडम्बवेंटम इन्त्र उड़िजबमाय इर्न्दद.
And I'm thankful that today he has raised up two such brothers to carry on this responsibility.
इद पुरुपयी, एडुत्सलुव्यदरके, इरंडे सगुदरले, अवर अप्पड़ी एडिप्रिक्रप्पड़नाल, देवनुके नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
I am an unmarried person.
नान तिरुमनमाका ओर नबर.
But it's better these two married brothers take the responsibility with brother Samuel.
सगुर सैमयल उडुकुड़, तिरुमनमान सगुदरले इंद पुरुपयुड़प्पदे, अदे नल्लद इन्त्र उनर्वकरे.
I also have limitations in my moving around.
नान अंगिमु सलुव्यदरे, इमकुड़ एनको ओर वरंब इरकरद.
So, I'm very happy to step down from my responsibility as an elder.
आय मूपरंगिरंदा पुरुपलरंदे, नान केय इरंगोदरके, मिखुम नान संतोषमलोनाय इरकरे.
I want to remain in the church and continue serving God's people wholeheartedly.
नान सभिले इर्न्द मुझिर्दियमाय, देवनुडे पिल्लिगले कुड़ियम सिय उर्मुरे.
Being submissive to the authority of these three elders as an ordinary brother.
मूपरले अधिकारत्तुकुम, नान कीपड़िदरके उर्मुरे.
As an ordinary brother.
ओर साधारण सगुदरराक.
Please pray for me that I will endure till the end.
नान बुड़िवरंदम नेट्रुकुम्बडियाई, निङल जबिंगल.
I must say that I've never received such a wonderful letter from any elder like this.
इद पोल्ले, ओर अर्पदमान ओर कड़ितित्ते, इंद मूपरत्तुलुम, नान इदोरे पेट्रदेलिले, नान सोलुवन, सोलवेंडम.
I praise the Lord for brother Vedayan, for brother Kadiravan.
नान सगुर कदिरवन काकन, देवनुके नंडिसलत्तुकरे.
So I want to pray for him also along with all of you.
अगेवे, उंगलीलारुम कुड़ सेयर्न, नान अवरकाम, नान जबिक्के उर्मुरे.
Lord, we thank you for our dear brother Kadiravan.
अंडवरे, निङल अरम्यान सगुदर कदिरवन कान नाम जबिकरो.
Despite all his limitations, what a wonderful job he has done along with brother Samuel.
अंडवर उड़े एल्ला बेलविनत्तोडुकुड़, एल्ला अर्पदमान ओर उड़ित्ते, सगुर सैमयल उडुकुड़ सेयर्नु सिद्धुकरार.
And how so many brothers have been blessed through him and have respected him.
अंडवरे, अवर मुलमा एव्वलो सगुदरले, आश्रुदिक पट्टुकरारग, उड़े मधिकरारग.
With all his limitations, he's a tremendous testimony to so many other people who can move around more freely than him.
अवरे काटले, अंडवरे उडलियाय, सुधंधरमा, अंगेमिंगम, पोकुड़, अनेकरके एव्वलो अरम्यान ओर साच्या इरकरुकरार.
We praise God for such a brother in CFC.
अंडवरे, सीएफसीले अप्पड़ी पट्टा सगुदरकाम, उम्मकन्डिसलत्तुकरो.
Bless him.
अवर आश्रुदिम, अंडवरे.
Let your nail-pierced hand anoint him.
उड़िया अनिपायिंद अकरंगला, अंडवरे अवर अभिषेक्य कट्टुम.
To be a tremendous blessing in the church.
सभिले, पिरुत्त ओर आश्रुदमाय इरक्कुम्बडियां.
Just like in the past.
अरंदे कालत्ते पोलवे.
We commit him to you, Lord.
उम्मकन्ड अर्पणिकरो, अंडवरे.
In Jesus' name.
एस्यू नामतिल पितावे.
Amen.
Amin.
Thank you, brother Kadiravan.
सगुर कदिरवन उम्मलके नंडिर्कसलत्तुकरो.
Ah, I want you brothers also, when you get time, to express your gratitude to him for all the years he's served your church.
सभी, अवर, उड़ुवांडुगलाके, अवर पणिसे सिद्धुकाके, निङल नेहरमेडुत्त, अवरे तरुर्बुकुंदे, निङल नंडिसलत्तुम्बडियान नान उर्मुरे.
Now, I believe that elders are like shepherds.
मूपरगल, मेपुरले पोल इरकराल इन्त्र नान उर्मुरे.
You read in Matthew chapter nine.
मत्ते नौबदा मधिकार्त्तले वासिकरो.
That when Jesus, verse thirty-six, Matthew nine thirty-six.
मत्ते नौबदा मधिकारम, मृपत्य आरम मसनु.
When Jesus looked at the people, he had compassion on them because they were like sheep without a shepherd.
अवर तिरलाना जनगले कंडपुरद, अवर मेपुलाना आडुले पोल, तोइंदुपुनुलुम, सदरपट्टुलुमाय इर्न्दबडियाल, अवरल मेल मनदोरीकी इन्त्र वासिकरो.
And then he said to his disciples, "The harvest is plenty, but the workers are few."
मधरके प्रके शिष्यरे पात्ते छुनार, आरुड़े मिखुदी वेलयाट्टलो कुरयु.
So pray to the Lord that he'll send out workers into his harvest.
अदलाल, अर्पुके एजमान, अदलाल, अर्पुके वेलयाट्टले अनपुम्बड़िया, अवरे वेंडी कोलिंगल इन्त्र रार.
So many people use this verse to say that we should go as missionaries to other parts of India.
नाम, इंदिया देसत्तले, मटर पगिगले का अर्पणियारलाके सलेवेंडमेंट्र, अंद विषयत्तले, इंद वसनत्ते तरुर्बुप्पडिक्के सोलुकरारग.
But we must always read a verse in the context in which it comes.
आनल इप्पड़ी तम्यार वसनत्ते, इंद पिन्नले वरुदरद इन्त्र नान निन्नत्त वासिक्य वेंडम.
And what we see here is Jesus is saying there are not enough shepherds in verse thirty-six.
मृपत्य आरम वसन्तिले, कोधमान मेप्परले इल्ले, इंद तान अंडवर सोलुकरार.
And one paraphrase says, "Jesus looked at them and his heart broke when he saw that condition of sheep without a shepherd."
Ameepanila aadugale parkumudhe oru irudiyam anathu udangidhe enna solappattukaradu.
Can you imagine Jesus heartbreaking because there are no shepherds for the sheep?
Aadugale kaaga meepanilla inbadhanale esundu irudiyam udikeppadukarade ningal unandrukriyala?
I believe it's like that as the Lord looks at churches around the world, very few shepherds are there.
Indrakkiyam ulagamodhu thum, ulasabigalele devan parkumudhu indrakkiyam migak purivana meeparale irukkaraargal.
There are many pastors who are after people's money.
Anegapastar marakal jannagundiyi panathukupinaga pooraragal.
And there are many other preachers who want to be like lords over their flock.
Anegaprasangiarakal tangal mandaike, avrakal aadugiseerulaga irukkaragal.
And there are many other preachers who are always rebuking and abusing the flock.
Anegaprasangiarakal tangal mandai eppudimay katinthukundu eppudimay avrali thittikundu irukkaragal.
But lambs and sheep don't need abuse and shouting all the time.
Aadugalekum aattukutikalekum eppudimay sattamboodhuvadi kariyam tevilay.
They need to be led to green pastures to be fed. That's what the need of sheep are.
And the aadugalekudiyat teviennavindhal avrakal pulvaliile avrali naratha padavindham avagalekku aagaram bedichavindham.
Jesus told Peter, if you love me, feed my sheep and take care of my lambs.
Enne nesipayana, enni anpukuruvayana, enna aadugale meepayaga enna esu pedhuripathuthunna.
Very few shepherds are like that and Jesus heart breaks even today.
Agave idupondra meeparun migak purivana kuvay irukkaragal esundiyaridiyam indrakkiyam adhey parkumudhu udikeppadukaradu.
And sometimes when a person becomes a shepherd, after some time he becomes so proud, thinking that he is somebody important.
Siles meeparanabiragatangal migamukkiamana nambaral enni avrali permiipadukaragal.
Then God keeps them far away. He keeps proud people far away.
Appriyanal devan permiyanugale duurtale vekkara.
There are many pastors and elders like that. God keeps them far away because they are so proud.
Anegapastar maral mooparulam appriyirukkaragal devan avrali duurtale vaitturukkaraenandhal avrali permiyanugale irukkaragal.
Please remember Psalm one thirty-eight verse six.
Agave sangita nuddhi muppattadhu aare, ninnil yaamathile vaitthukolungal.
God keeps proud people far away from him.
Devan permiyanugale duurtale vekkara.
And I decided I want to be like the Lord and keep proud people far away from me.
Naanam appri tirmanathuthu utten, devanipolave naanam permiyanugale duurtale vekkavumugre.
I don't want to be near them.
Naan, avrakka argaamile irukkavumugle.
Pride is the infection of the devil.
Permeenbadhu visasunudiyavu thottur.
Please be very careful, all of you brothers, even if you're brothers.
Agave ellasagodarule, ninnil mooprayillavudham, ninnilam gavunamunulala irukvindham.
Husbands, please be very careful to remain in humility in your home.
Anavanmarle, avrakadumatalen, ninnil thaarmiil nalikthirungal.
And wives also remain in humility.
Manigumarle, ninnilam thaarmiil nalikthirungal.
The other important thing is this.
Nunu rukkiamana karnam, kariyam idu, idu than.
I felt the need to emphasize the importance of forgiving one another.
Oruvaru manipadurudiyamukkyuthothu thay valiruthothu thay kuruthunna, enna appudhu unandrukriyala.
In Matthew chapter six.
Matey aaramadigaram.
Jesus said in verse fourteen.
Esu, padinanka vasanathile soliirukkara.
There is a condition for our heavenly Father to forgive our sins.
Namudiya paavangali manipadarku paralog pidavukku oru nibandhanay undu.
Now, if you ask the average believer, how does the Lord forgive your sin?
Oru sarashri viswasee pathu devan eppudungal paavangali manikirana thukkalingal.
He say, I confess my sin to the Lord and one John one. And one John one nine says, he forgives me.
Unriyavan unruvumbo thulukaradu, avre enni manikirara.
That's true.
Adu unmeedhan.
But before he forgives you, it says in Matthew six fourteen, you have to forgive others.
Anal manipadukum unbadhaaga, matey aar padinankale vasikaradu pula, ninnil matrali mudaladu manikivindham.
My dear brothers and sisters.
Narviana sagodrasagodhirigal.
I really believe this is why many, many people's prayers are not answered.
Indhan karnathinuvathamaga than anegurudiyah, ah, paavangal manikappadamalirukkaradu.
I've been a believer now for sixty-one years.
Naan appudhu aruthiyor aandugalaga oru viswaseeaga karundrukriyala.
I'm nearly eighty-one years old.
Enakkappudhu empatthi oru vaayidaga karadu.
And one of the great truths I've learnt is this.
Naan katirkundu oru migapriya satyamudhu than.
If I live always forgiving others who hurt me.
Enakkukaaya padithunavale, kumbadunavale, eppudimay naan manitthu vandukundamdaal.
That means as soon as I hear that somebody said something against me, I say, Lord, please forgive him.
Enni yaravudhe timiayai soliuttaralindu, soli ketta maathratthali, aandavare avrali manikappaduthaalindu, naan solukare.
I don't have to wait for him to come and ask forgiveness from me.
Avre nandudhel vandhu manipukketkavare, naan kaathurukamati.
No.
Illai.
I heard somebody did something against me or my family or spoke something against me.
Enakkuka urodumaga peshunaralu, aladu enakkuka urodumagalu, aladu kudumbathukku urodumagalu, edho kariyate seetharagalu.
Somewhere else.
Engiyoh, uraththali.
Appriy told me.
Enakkataipattisolukaragal yaravaru var.
I say, Lord, I forgive him.
Andavare, naanavare manikirainandhu solukare.
I don't want to wait.
Naan kaathurkave tevilay.
Immediately.
Unadiyaha manikirain.
That is how I have sought to live for many years now.
Apprittha, naneg aandugalaga, naan vaara mayuchathurukare.
And I want to say, I live in the joy of the Lord every day.
Orunalam, naan kathrodiyasandoshathile vandukundukkare, enna naan solukare.
I want to say to all of you, please, please forgive others immediately.
Agave avrakallarkunnaan solukaradu ennavindhal, udanadiyaha, matrali ninnil manitthu undungal.
Don't wait for them to ask forgiveness.
Avraravulathile vandhu manipukketkavare kaathurukavindha.
And start at home.
Mudaladu kudumbathile aarameeyigal.
Forgive your wife, forgive your husband.
Neekanavane maningal, manavi maningal.
That's how Jesus was on the cross.
Apprittha, esu unselvela irunda.
We look at Jesus and say, thank you, Lord, for dying for me.
Naan esuipathu, aandavare enkaka, marithukaka avmukka nantiidhu solukaro.
But what were almost the first words he spoke on that cross?
Anal, ndeselvela, avr peshnamudal warthi enna?
Father, forgive them for killing me.
Itavae, ivralen, kollaisikarala, lirkaan, neen manitthu undum.
They don't realize what a serious thing it is to kill the son of God.
Deva kumarane kolluvadheenbadhu, ewalu siriyavu kariyam enbadhu, avlaariyadu irukkaragal.
They don't know.
Avrakthirivellay.
Now, I want to tell you, you're also a child of God.
Naan solukare, ninnilam oru devunle priliyaa irukkare.
And other people who hurt you don't know what a serious thing it is to hurt a child of God.
Ugalakka kumbaduthunavare, devunle priliyay thunbappaduthu, edhuwalu siriyakariyam enbadhu, avlaariyadu irukkaragal.
You're the son or the daughter of a heavenly king.
Ninnil paraloga raja unudiyam maganai magalai irukkare.
The son of a heavenly king.
Paraloga raja unudiyah, oru puttran.
The daughter of a heavenly king.
Paraloga raja unudiyah, oru magal.
And when somebody speaks against you or does something to you, they don't realize what a serious thing it is.
Ugalakka urodumaga oru kariyate seethaladu, peshinallu, adu edhuwalu siriyakariyam enbadhu, avrala unaradu irukkaragal.
What shall you do?
Enna seevirigal?
Father, forgive them. They don't know what they're doing.
Itavae, ivralakka manneyam, avrali chakadu, ennatu, ariyadu irukkaragal.
I have nothing against them.
Enakkavralakka urodumaga unramilay aandavare.
I wish them good.
Naan avralakka naladu narakavindham.
I do not wish any evil for them.
Andavare, avrali timi narakavindham, naan kenchuthum kodanavare ennuvallay.
And it says here further in verse fifteen, Matthew six fifteen, if you don't forgive them, your father will not forgive you.
Matey aar padinankale kire vasikrom, avrakadumatalen, ninnilavrali mannyadu undhal, avrali pidav, avrali tapidangalay mannyadurpar.
So, let me take an example.
Oru tharavatthu avrak solukare.
Supposing you've lived a good life for many years.
Aneg aandugalaga, ninni.
As a born again Christian.
Ninnil manandrimena kristavana, aneg aandugalaga, nalavadke vandukirukkare.
Then towards the end of your life.
Unavadke mudivilay.
You have hold a tremendous bitterness against somebody who hurt you in some way.
Edhu oru vudhatthile, avrakadu thingaraita, oru nabarmi, ninnil edhuwalu oru kasappay vaitturukkare.
And you just don't forgive him.
Avre manipadullay.
And you die like that.
Adheepala, ninnil marithu undukkare.
Without forgiving him.
Avre manikkamalay.
What does it say in verse fifteen?
Panindavasathile enna solappattukaradu?
Ah, in Jesus' words, heaven and earth will pass away. This word will not pass away.
Vanamum mumi modindhuvunala, avrakadu warthi oduvadullay.
What is that?
Adu enna?
If you don't forgive others, your heavenly Father will not forgive you.
Manishudiyat tapidangale, ninnilavrali mannyadurundhal, ungal pidav, ungal tapidangalyam mannyadurpar.
That's clear.
Adu teliwadu irukkaradu.
To me, it is as clear as two plus two is four.
Irundam, irundam, kutinaal, naankeen, enna edhu badhu, edhu teliwai irukkado, adu pula.
I don't care who the other, I don't care who the other person is.
Matranabari yarainbadhu, enakkupuruttalay.
If you don't forgive him, your father will not forgive you.
Pidaavamalay manikivay mattar.
In fact, the Lord taught us to pray like this.
Solappunal, devan, ippidha, naam jabikeyamidiya, katirkundukaradu.
Verse nine.
Unbadham vasanam.
Pray then in this way.
Indha udamay, ninnil jabiingal.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be your name.
Paramanakangal pidavay, ungal namam paristapaduvada.
Now, question comes, we don't have to repeat this prayer.
Naam, nde jabaththi mindumamay, tiruppi tiruppi cholla tevilay?
He only said, he didn't say, repeat this daily, he said, pray in this way, verse nine.
Well, unbadham vasathile vasikram, idupolave, jabiingalindu solavale, anal, ninnil jabikeyavendiya, vidamavadhu, enna solukaradu.
Not repeat these words.
Indha warthilay, tiruppi cholla tevilay?
In this way.
Indha vidamay jabiingal.
That means putting God's knee, the kingdom of God first.
Adavadu devunle rajyaththi mudaladu veyipadu.
Now, the question is, how often should we have this spirit of prayer, even if we don't repeat it?
Naam, idai, appriyay tiruppi chollaavuttalam, indha jabaththurudiyah, aaviyay, na vaitturukavindham.
Should we pray like this once a week?
Waraththile, orunal, appri jabiipada?
Or once in two, three days or on Sundays?
Aladu, irundmu, naatlik, oru moriya, aladu, nyayatukkum, indha kathrodhi jabaththi soluvada?
There is an answer in the prayer itself.
Indha jabaththile, ayathukuliyabadullirukkaradu.
How often we should pray this?
Naan, naam, edhuwalu, adikadik, naam jabikeyavindham?
Verse eleven, give us this day our daily bread.
Padanaram vasanam, engalakke vendiya, aagarthi, indriyangelakka tharum.
So, daily.
Agave anudinamum.
So, not that we should repeat this daily.
Naam idai, dhandorum tiruppi tiruppi chollaavindhum, enna alla?
We must have this spirit of prayer every day.
Anal, orunalam, indha jabaththurudiyah, aaviyay, naam kondurukavindham.
Dependence on God for our food.
Namudiya aagarthirkaai, devanisarundhrupadu?
Particularly at a time like this, when there's so many people have lost their jobs.
Pripa, ippa, indha kaalakattathile, anegathangal, velay ezundukkaragal.
We can't go, many people can't go to work.
Anegar velayke pokamidiyavellay?
What a need there is for this prayer, prayer, Lord, please help us to get our daily bread.
Andavare, engalakke vendiya, indra aagarthi, indriyangelakka tharum, enkara, jabam, edhuwalu, avravadke, nidras, ah, yadarthama irukvindham?
And forgive us our debts as we have forgiven others, verse twelve.
Panindavasathile, ninnil kadanali kuduthu, ninnil manikiradu pula, ninnil kadanlal, ninnilakka maniyum.
That must also be daily.
Iduuum dhandorum seyavendiya kariyama irukvindham.
Give us this day our daily bread.
Indri vendiya aagarthi, engalakka tharum.
And Lord, today if somebody has hurt me, I want to forgive him.
Indri yaravde, eni kaya padithundhal, avrali, naan manikirain.
Today, I want you to forgive me.
Indri anavare, neen manikivindham.
This is a very, very important thing.
Idhu migamukkiamana oru kariyam.
Because otherwise, our heavenly Father will not hear our prayer.
Illavudhal, paraloga pidav, ungal jabaththi, kekamidiyadu, kekamatta.
And don't wait till some serious sickness comes into your home before you start forgiving others.
Matrali manipadarku unbadhaaga, oru siriyavyaadi varavindham, enbadhu varay, ninnil kaathurukavindha?
No, 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 forgive them, even if everybody is healthy in your home, forgive everyone.
Unakadumatalen, allarve, aarikkamay ezundhalal, allari manitthu undungal.
Jesus told a parable in Matthew eighteen.
Matey panathile, esu roomey chunnar.
He said in verse twenty-three, the kingdom of heaven is like a king who settled accounts with his slaves.
Iruthi muddam vasanathile, paraloga raja manadhu, oru raja, thunudiyavale, kalaikaralathile, kanakalay, parthaar, enbadhu parkrom.
Matthew eighteen twenty-four.
Matey panathiruthi nanggu.
And one man owed him ten thousand talents.
Oru manidhan, padinayaram thalandhakadan bhattavu naayundha.
And he said, yeah, yeah, I'll pay for it.
Naanadhi tiruppi koduthudukare, enna solukarana.
How could he do that? That is impossible.
Avnal, epri cheyyamidiyam, adu kodadu kariyam.
Because it is like millions and crores of rupees.
Edhuwalu kodikkanakana ruvaay, madipuladha irukkandhakar.
But it says, the Lord, the master, had compassion, verse twenty-seven, and forgave him the whole thing.
Anal, nde, udiyakarunni, aanavun, manadirenki, avranu, udalay pani, avnakku, murumiyay, kadanay, manitthu undtha.
He said, okay, it's a huge debt, I forgive you, you don't have to pay it back.
Periyakadan, agave, naanun, nee manitthu undukkare, enna soliuttha.
And he went out and he found another slave, verse twenty-eight, who owed him a small amount of money.
Thalakka, konjamponam, kadan bhattundhu, oru manidhanay, poi, avan thondee, padikirana.
And he caught him by the throat.
Avan thondee, nerikthu.
And verse twenty-eight, and began to choke him.
Avani, kadanay, koduthu tirkavindham, enna soli, avan thondee, nerikirana.
And he said, please have mercy on me, I'll pay it.
Naan, epriyavadu, kativudikare, enni, midu porumiyay, arum, enna soli, andha.
He said, no, I will not forgive you, I'm gonna take you and put you in prison.
Naan, nee manikamati, nee shirakchaliyale, poduvay, enna solukarana.
So, the king heard about this.
Rajadhi ketta.
And the king called this slave who did not forgive his brother.
Oodikarni, manikkada, udiyakarni, avanukku, kuputha.
And he said in verse thirty-two, I forgave you everything.
Naan, kadan, murudumay, avnakku, manittheneen, enna, thuputhirandam vasanthile, solukarana.
How much, how big your debt was?
Uday kadan, edhuwalu peridhaayundhu.
What this man owed you was a small amount.
Indha manidhan, avnakku, kadan bhattadhu, suruthogai.
Why couldn't you forgive him?
Enni, nee avani, manikivadiyavellay?
And the king was so angry with him, he handed him, not only put him in the jail, but to be tortured in the jail, verse thirty-four.
Avan shirakchaliyale, kaavaliyale, podudhu, mattumalla, angia, avanu, ubathrapaduthu, muriyai, avanu, oppukadutha.
See, that is a very serious thing.
Idhu, vikum, oru siriyavu kariyam.
Because it says in verse thirty-five, my heavenly Father will do the same to you if you don't forgive your brother from your heart.
Ninnilam, avanavantan, sagodhan, seetha, tapidangal, manukurumay, maniyamarpunala, paramapidam, appriyaseiva.
Who is the you to whom the Lord is speaking?
Unyekka, aandavare, peshikarare, nee, enna, yaray, kuruthi, peshikara?
Is he speaking to the Pharisees, your heavenly Father, my Father will not forgive you?
Ennadi, paramapidav, avne, manikkamattara, enna soli, pariseri, parthipesikarara?
No.
Illai?
It says in verse twenty-one, Peter was the one who came and asked a question.
Iruthi oram vasanthile, Pedhurudhan, vondindha, kelvi, ketta.
Oh, he's replying to Peter and the other disciples.
Agave, Pedhrukku, mattar, shishulukku, badhey, solukarana.
You, Peter.
Pedhurve, nee?
My Father will not forgive you if you don't forgive your brother.
Neen manikkavutta, unne, manikkamattara?
If Jesus could say that to Peter, you think he won't say that to you and me?
Pedhrukku, esu vadhey, soliirundha, avrakka, menakka, oru, solamattara?
Dear brothers and sisters.
Arviana sagodarale.
Take this parable seriously.
Indha umay, ninnil, mikum, jakkadhey, eduthu, kolungal.
Do you have a conflict with your mother-in-law or daughter-in-law?
Unemamaanaroda, aladu, marumaloda, avrakka, oru, pinnakka, irukkada?
Maybe they have both done some wrong things to you.
Orulay, oru, iru, oru, me, select, kettakariyadhal, seethukkaragal.
I'll give you one bit of advice.
Oru, siru, aalosni, avrakadu solukare.
As a servant of the Lord, I tell you in Jesus' name.
Naan, deva udiyakarnay, ezundhi, esu, namathnala, avrakadu solukare.
If you do not forgive that person.
Ninnil, naanabari, manitthu undtha.
God will not, God will not forgive you.
Devan, avrali, manikivay matta.
If you don't forgive that person, God will not forgive you.
Ninnil, naanabari, manikkada, pachthatal, devan, ungal, manikkamattara?
And if you die like that.
Idupola, ninnil marithaal.
There's no opportunity to ask forgiveness after death.
Manat, maranathukuparag, manipukketkavat, tharname, illay?
So, think of eternity.
Agave, nittiyaththi, enni, parungal.
But not only eternity, think of right now, don't you want to live in fellowship with God?
Nittiyathivutudungal, epodhu, ninnil, devan, udukkada, aikkeppadu, vaara, vilpam, illay?
If you are a humble person, it is very easy to forgive others.
Ninnil thaarmiilavu, nabara, ezundhal, matrali, manipadukku, mikum, elidu.
Only proud people find it very difficult to forgive others.
Permeen, karanakku, mattumay, matrali, manipadukku, kastamaga, irukko.
So thereby, you can know whether you're proud or humble.
Agave, idan mulamaga, ninnil thaarmiilavu, la, permiilavu, enna, arundulala.
I also want to give you another word of comfort in this season.
Indha naatkali, innuru, aardarin, vaaththi, solavumugre.
One Corinthians chapter ten.
Unukurthi, er pathamadigaram.
And verse thirteen.
Adhi muddam vasanam.
I don't know what trials you're going through at this time.
Indha kaalathile, ninnil, indha, kashthukulaga, kandhaseligal, enna, thirivellay?
But if you have forgiven everybody.
Elaari, ninnil, manitthurundhal.
And you want to see God's kingdom first.
Mudaladu devunle rajyaththi, thadu, uruminal?
And you're keeping a good conscience.
Nalmanasatshay, ninnil vaitturukkare.
That means you are ready to forgive.
Manipadukku, kayaithama, irukkare.
Ready to forgive and ask forgiveness.
Manipuk, kodupodukku, manipuk, bettukulukku, mayathama, irukkare.
If you hurt somebody, you must go and ask forgiveness.
Yarayavadu, ninnil, kumbaduthinundhal, ninnil, poi, manipukketkavindham?
Then God can do wonderful things for you.
Appudhu, devan, avrakarpathamana, kariyam, cheyyamidiy.
In this verse.
Indha vasanthile?
One Corinthians ten thirteen.
Unukurthi, er pathu, patimunru.
It says, God is faithful, he will not allow you to be tested beyond your ability.
Devan, unnilavu, avrakadu, tranaiki, mingi, ninnil, sodikappadu, avr, edangudukkamattar.
That's a wonderful promise.
Arpathamana, oru, vakka, thottam.
God will not allow you to be tested beyond your ability.
Uli tranaiki, mingi, ninnil, sodikappadu, avr, oru kaal, midangudukkamattar.
But in every trial, he'll provide some way for you to escape.
Anal, oru, sodanailay, tapikkullu, muriyana, oru, pokkayavum, dakkavaa.
Think of that as a, take that as a promise from God.
Idhu, devunle, thulandhu, oru, vakka, thottama, eduthukolungal.
Lord, I believe that in every, first of all, you'll not allow me to face any trial, which is too much for me.
Andavare, enakkataangakudada, sodanay, anumudikamati, aandavare.
But in every trial, you'll make a way for me to come out.
Anal, oru, sodanailay, madhulandhu, vidiyavu, oru, vadiyam, dakkuvay.
Please believe that.
Idhu, daiviseethu, namungal.
And that is why we can be free from anxiety.
Agave, than, naam, padattathil, thundu, udalay, ahamidiyum?
Certainly, we must be wise and prepare for the future.
Kandipaga, naam, nyanamulala, edhugalathukandhu, aayatthapadavindham.
And just like we save money for times when we may not have money, we save money for the future.
Naam, edhugalathile, panamillada, nairathirukandhu, epodhu, naam, panaththi, naam, samichro.
We must also believe that if we have limited resources, God will somehow take care of us.
Namakku, varambukutthatta, than, oru, varvay, than, irukkadu, purulutthu, than, irukkadan, enna, devan, kandipaga, namay, purupaduthukolvar.
See, I have traveled in many countries in the world.
Naan, ulagathile, palanadukkak, prayanam, seethukkare.
And I've seen one thing.
Oru kariyate, parthuk.
Even in Tamil Nadu and India.
Tamil Nadu, ensi, India, ensi.
Most of God's people, wholehearted people, are poor.
Anegamana, mulidiyamudhyadu, devunle, prilligal, eegalay, than, irukkaragal.
There are few who are rich.
Isuravangal, irukkaragal, migak, shree, gavvaral, irukkaragal.
There are very few who are very, very rich.
Mikum, panakarala, irukkaragal, migak, purivu.
Yes, there are some believers like that.
Am, sile, viswasee, appri, irukkaragal.
And some of them are very good believers who give a lot of money to the poor.
Appri, sile, nalav, viswasee, avrakal, andha, isuravangal, viswasee, eegalakka, panaththi, koduthkaragal.
God has made it like that.
Devan, appri, vaitturukkara.
Even in our CFC churches, there's some believers who earn a lot of money, who've given a lot of their money to help poor people.
CFC, kuda, appri, patte, isuravangal, saudal, irukkaral, narayya, panaththi, avr, eegalakai, koduthukkaragal.
So, we praise God for them.
Avrakka, naam, devunle, nanti, chathuthukrom.
But most of the believers are poor.
Anal, viswasee, avrakar, anegar, eegalay, irukkaragal.
But it says in James in chapter one, James chapter two, James chapter two.
Yakob, irandamadigaram, enna, vasukkaram.
Verse five.
Aindam vasanam.
James two, verse five.
Yakob, irandamadigaram, aindam vasanam.
Listen, my beloved brothers, didn't God choose the poor of this world to be rich in faith and heirs of the kingdom, which he promised to those who loved him?
En, priyamana sagodaray, kukkalingal, devan, ulagathin, dartharay, viswasee, isuravangal, akum. Amadathil, anpukuruvulakka, tham, vakka, thottam, padina, rajyaththi, sondhrekravu, akum, thirundulavale, illay?
So, whom has God chosen?
Ah, devan, yarak, thirundukundha.
As he looks around the world, he finds it's the poor people who are more needy, who come to him.
Naam, ulagathititthi, parkumudhu, devaile, ulavu, than, devitkaaga, darthramanu, devunle, thulavukkaragal.
See, most people in the world are not rich.
Ulagathile, anegar, panakarala, illay?
Most people in the world are poor.
Ulagathile, permaalanam, makal, eegalay, than, irukkaragal.
Even in India, the number of really rich people is small.
India, desathile, enka, panakarana, irukkakudiyay, enni, kai, mikum, purivu.
But among the poor people, God has chosen his children.
Anal, eegalay, irukkakudiyay, makalathile, devan, tamdri, prilligal, thirundurukkara.
And I've been round so many other villages in Tamil Nadu and I've seen some very precious, precious poor brothers.
Agave, naan, Tamil Nadu, paladramalukku, chindukkare, enna, angay, ilayere, pattra, nal, eegay, sagodil, irukkaragal.
And poor sisters.
Eegayana sagodil, irukkaragal.
They really love the Lord.
Avr, unyalamay, devan, nesikirana.
And they seek to live and be witnesses for the Lord in a sacrificial way.
Avr, edhuwalu, dyagamana, vudhatthile, devanikant, satshag, irukka, murtputukkara.
God has chosen the poor of the world to be rich in faith.
Viswasee, isuravangal, irukkamidiyaga, devan, ulagathile, dartharay, thirundukundha.
And it says here that he has promised the kingdom to such people.[1386.81] So, if you are poor and you are trusting in the Lord, you are one of those whom God has chosen to be, to inherit his kingdom. Jesus also said just before he left. He told his disciples very clearly. In John sixteen. Verse thirty-three. John sixteen thirty-three. In the world, you will have tribulation. He said that very clearly. That was almost his last words to them. His last message to his disciples was in John fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. You read it sometimes, this is the last message Jesus preached to his disciples before he went to the cross. Three chapters. John fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Then John seventeen is a long prayer that he prayed. In this three-chapter message that he gave. What is the last sentence in this small message? Listen. John sixteen thirty-three. In the world, you will have tribulation. But take courage, I have overcome the world. God is almighty, he can very easily make it, life very easy for all his children, that's the easiest thing for God to do. But why has he made things difficult? I think it is to help us to draw closer to him. When things are very easy and comfortable, most people tend to forget about God. So, but when some trials come, we turn to God. That's not the only reason. But through trials, we become strong. In my sixty-one years as a believer, God has taken me through many, many testings and trials. And opposition from others. Being taken to court. For standing up for the faith. Many years. And God has, in it all, shown me his tremendous power. And those trials have made me a stronger person. And taught me to be merciful to other people. God has a great purpose in trials. It is through trials that we have a ministry to other people. What I have learnt of God is not just by studying the Bible, but through the trials God has taken me through. That was true with the apostle Paul also. Second Corinthians chapter one. Second Corinthians chapter one and verse four. Three and four. God is called here, the God of all comfort. And in our affliction, he comforts us. Comforts us means he gives us strength. In the midst of our trials. And why does he do that? Verse four. So that we can give others the same comfort in their trials. With the same comfort that God gave us. So that means we get a ministry to other people. So you don't get a ministry to other people just by going to Bible school or even by studying the Bible. You don't have to go to a Bible school. No prophet or apostle ever went to a Bible school. And it's not enough just to study the Bible to preach to others. We must study the Bible. But it's so, here it says, what we preach to others is not what we studied in the Bible, but the strength that God gave us in our trial is what we preach to others. If you have not experienced God strengthening you in your trial, you got nothing to preach to others. That's why Paul had such a fantastic ministry to other people. Because God took him through so many trials. Because he had to have such a fantastic ministry. So don't get discouraged, my brothers and sisters. Say, Lord, I don't understand all the reason why you are taking me through these trials. But I want to know you as the God of all comfort at this time. I want you to know you as the God who encourages them all the time. So that I can give the same strength and encouragement to others. God is called here, the God of all comfort. And God is also called in Romans fifteen, verse five. Romans fifteen, verse five. The God who gives encouragement. So God gives comfort and God gives encouragement. So that we become comforters and encouragers to other people. Not because we read it in the Bible. But because we went through a trial and we experienced God's comfort there. And we experienced God strengthening us there. And we experienced God encouraging us there. And God forgiving us there. So we forgive others. And we encourage others. And we strengthen others. And we comfort others. With what we receive from God. That is true Christian ministry. And even if you are not an, of course, all elders must do that, but even if you are not an elder, you can do it. For example, you sisters, don't you talk to other sisters sometimes? You may not preach in the church. But when you talk to other sisters, can't you give them a word of encouragement? Can't you give a word of encouragement to your wife? Or to your husband? Or to your children especially? Ask God to fill you with the Holy Spirit. Say, Lord, I will live a different type of life from today onwards. A life where I will encourage and strengthen others around me. And whatever you give me, I encourage and strengthen, I want to pass it on to others. Let's pray. Heavenly Father. Thank you for your love and care for us. Help us to share with others all the blessing you give to us. Bless all those who have listened to this message today. And encourage all of them. To pass on to others what they have received. Forgive everyone. Thank you for hearing us. Jesus' name. Now, before we finish, I want to take five minutes. And he would like to, my wife and I would like to just say a few words to thank you. If you can all turn on your videos, we'd like to see your faces. Yeah, good, now I can see what a lot of beautiful people we have in CFC, Tamil Nadu. Yeah, your faces are so wonderful, even though we are going to.